Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the August eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners. If we'd all rise and say the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing is the agenda review, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
All right, and doesn't look like Representative Olson's here yet.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Again, doesn't look like Representative Olson's here yet.
I don't see him, Mr. Chair.
All right, I know he was planning on being here to talk to us this morning. We, we, I need a motion to close our meeting so we can go on to our EDA meeting.
Move to recess.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. And we will call up Nancy. Come on up.
Morning Nancy.
Review of the agenda.
Yep.
Morning.
So, we need an agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'm second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, the same. Passes. All right, the minutes of March twenty-first.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes. All right, we got capital improvement project number one-one-zero-six-seven. Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Chair. Today we do have Jim Tajik, who's in charge of our maintenance staff at public housing, and he's going to share with you the resolution accepting the feasibility report and ordering a capital improvement project for three oh five Trundle Street.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The item before you today is the feasibility report for a public housing unit located at three oh five Trundle Street in Mapleton. Earlier this year, the executive director authorized staff to enter into a professional services agreement with Olson and Hobby Architects of Mankato to assist with creating a feasibility report and preliminary cost estimate, which is the item before you today. Work will include repairs and installation of interior finishes, and updated kitchen, bathroom improvements, interior doors, and exterior improvements, including windows, deck replacement, and landscaping. The total estimated cost of the improvements, including design costs, is one hundred ninety thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. With the upcoming RAD conversion, the unit was selected for modernization in order to avoid disruption to the unit once it was occupied. Staff recommends the authority accept the feasibility report, order the improvement, authorize the executive director to prepare final plans and specifications, and instruct the executive director to advertise for bids in accordance with the requirement of law. This concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. It's nice to see the money getting spent over there in the small communities.
Yeah, that's great. Super. And looking for a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes. Looks like that's all we had today for us.
Thank you.
We've spoken adjourned.
Thank you.
Got a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes. And we will continue with our...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
It does look like Representative Olson.
I know, I know. That was going on there.
All right.
I saw him walk in. Representative Olson, welcome.
I'm really glad that you didn't call me up right away. Would've had to take some deep breaths as I went upstairs. I knew I was late and I was like, oh boy, here we go. I think I've met the vast majority of these commissioners here.
Sure. Nice to see you.
But I figured I'd give you my card and...
Do I get to speak here? Wherever you're comfortable.
You know, you're tired. You might want to sit down in front of us.
Yeah, a whole flight of stairs. Oh, boy. I'll have to sit down with you all.
Good thing we're not on the third floor.
Yeah, good, good thing. Most other courthouses, I don't have to go all the way to the second floor to talk to you all. So, for those of you who don't know, I'm Bjorn Olson. I'm your, the new state representative for the southern portion of Blue Earth County. So if you look at the line, it's south bend is kind of the end of, of Mankato, beginning of rural Blue Earth County, and I represent just about everything to the south of that. There's a little sliver in, in eastern Blue Earth County, northeastern Blue Earth County that I don't have, and that's Brian Fars. He's, you know, it's, it's a very interesting scenario in which Mankato, St. Peter, Niklet County are all one senate district, and then the other senate district kind of goes in a crescent moon shape around.
Remains of Blue Earth County.
Yeah, it's kind of, so the, the constitution of the state of Minnesota says they had that the judges start in the top left corner of the state of Minnesota, and then they kind of work their way whichever way they want. I think that they worked kind of their way down, worked their way up, and then they met in the middle and they said, oh, boy, what are we going to do in southwest, or south central Minnesota? So, they kind of cut us in a very interesting scenario. But I have most of the real estate in Blue Earth County, not most of the population of Blue Earth County, and then I've got half of Wattin-Wan County. You take, basically, it's the eastern half of Wattin-Wan County is all mine, and then most of Martin County, less Trimont and four townships is my district, and then most of the population of Ferbo County, but not the most of the territory of Ferbo County. So, a lot of territory in Blue Earth County, a lot of people in Ferbo County, almost all of Martin County, and then half of Wattin-Wan County, less, if you look at St. James is right in the center of Wattin-Wan County. I don't have St. James. So, it's really kind of an interesting way in which they've cut the map. But a little bit about myself, I spent four years as a small-town mayor, so I know, you know, very, the administrative aspect of running small towns. I understand that. My budget was about half a million dollars. So I was just that amboy yesterday, and I, I hope I impressed them when I said, well, based off your population, I would estimate that you make about three hundred and ten thousand in your local levy and a hundred and seventy-five thousand in local government aid. And they're like, oh, it's about ten thousand dollars off of what we actually get. So, small-town running that, I understand that. I understand building roads. I've been on the transportation committee now for two terms now. That's the one that I've spent most of my time on. I'm on the tax committee this year. Don't thank me for it or blame me for it. I voted no, so you don't get to thank me for the, the extra road money that you're going to get as a county. I voted against that. I also voted against the tax increases, so I don't, maybe you can't do anything for me. I don't, I don't, I just get to like a, an NA, not applicable maybe in that category? I'm not sure. You can't thank me, you can't blame me. So, I'm also on the veterans committee. I used to be on local government committee, and you have two terms on the transportation committee. That's basically, that's why I'm here, is to introduce myself, let you know that I'm here for you. We got, this last year, we got twelve point eight million dollars for Medelia. They have an entire section of their street that is going to get completely overdone, including the infrastructure underneath. We unlocked about ten million dollars for Vernon Center. They have a water project that had some issues. They had some money allocated last year, or two years ago, but there were issues with the wording, the language that was how it was. Their scope was larger than what it could be based off of the increased costs, and so we had to do some adjustments to unlock those funds, which we got unlocked. Couple of years ago, I got four million dollars for Sherburne for their roads. So, long story short, let me know what, what I can do to help support you. I know that in Mankato area, you have a water project that you're working on, excessively expensive, and I know that the city of Mankato came to me and they said, hey, we know you're not in the district. And I said, wait a second, where do, where do my constituents go to buy school supplies? You know, they, where do my constituents go to buy clothes? Where do they go to get a new phone or a new computer? The vast majority of my constituents have one place to go when they're going for their back-to-school shopping, or they're going on a Saturday to a, to a big, the big town, right? They're going to Mankato. And so anytime, even if it's not a part of my district, don't look at it and say, well, that's, that's not Bjorn's district. He doesn't care about that. I care about everything that my district needs, and my district needs includes Mankato. So please let me know how I can help support you there. You know, with that water project, I was, it's, it's an interesting relationship, so I was fighting as hard as I could to get Luke to do, you know, to help continue the fight to get more for Mankato for the water project. So, I think we have a decent enough relationship, Luke and I. Obviously, we're adversaries, but we're both for southern Minnesota, and it kind of puts Blue Earth County in a really good spot because someday the Republicans will be in the majority, and then I'll fight for you as hard as I possibly can, and I'll have an advantage. And right now, he's in the majority, so he has the advantage, but he's still fighting for southern Minnesota. So, any questions of me? Otherwise, I'll let you get back to your business. I just wanted to give him my card. If you look at the card, you've got the office number and you've got the cell phone number. If you call the office, you're going to get ahold of a really nice guy. His name's Carl. He will then call me to tell me that you called, and then I'll call you. So, if you just want to use the cell phone, that's a much easier and quicker way of getting ahold of me, and I'll call you right back if I don't answer. Sometimes I get some spam calls that I don't, I don't know who they're from, so...
Don't we all?
Yeah, leave a message and I'll call you right back. So, any other questions? Otherwise, I'll, I'll say adios to you all, and we'll see you soon.
Well, we really appreciate you being here. I mean, it's, it's great to have our representatives come in and introduce themselves and talk to us and, and show us how much they care, and we, and when you were talking about which part of the state that you, you handle, I consider to represent the state of Minnesota, representing the state of Minnesota, not just the portion that you live in. Just like, as us, we have five districts. We, we handle Blue Earth County. You know, we don't just handle what's in our district, we handle all of Blue Earth County. So, I thank you very much for the work you do.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We'll keep fighting for you guys. Let me know anything I can do for you.
Thank you, Representative. Great day. All right. And we will now go into the ditch fifty-two public hearing. Good morning. Welcome to the county ditch fifty-two acceptance hearing. We will have Craig Austensen with the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff present the jurisdictional documents for this hearing. Craig.
Good morning. Actually, Craig is out there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
I'm, you know, they write these things down.
I know.
You read them.
We're good. We're good. So hearing notices were mailed on July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Mankato Free Press Public affidavit was run for three consecutive weeks, July eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and August first. Notices were also posted outside of this room and this building. I also have a quick memo. Blue Earth County ditch fifty-two resides in Sterling Township of Blue Earth County. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority established improvement on November twenty-third of two thousand twenty, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one. Project was awarded to Groundworks Backhoe Service LLC. Property Environmental Resources Department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petition improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractor. Purpose of an acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance hearing also starts a three-year warranty period for tile work, a one-year period, warranty period for the open ditch work. Drainage Authority Attorney Calvin Brugen recommends approving the engineer's acceptance report for the purposes of today's hearing. Mr. Van Brugen also, Van Brugen also recommends the CD fifty-two Drainage Authority continue this hearing for the limited purpose of reviewing the damages recommended by Mr. Ron Rehnquist on the claim for damages on this strike property. Today, we are asking Drainage Authority to accept the findings and owner of proving the engineer's acceptance report for County ditch fifty-two improvement project and release any final payments due to the contractor. We ask that the Drainage Authority continue the hearing to September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three for the limited purpose of addressing the strike damages and claims. That is all I have.
All right. I'll move to accept the affidavits and the legal record.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion carries. We'll now hear from the engineer, and I see Chuck's not here today.
Yep. I've got Jen Widmer, engineer at ISG, and then I've got Chris Adams, project manager.
All right, Jen and Chris, thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right, so the engineer's final acceptance report. Here is the CD fifty-two improvement watershed. Red line is the watershed. The faint gray line is where the improvement was installed. The FER was approved November two thousand twenty-one. Final plans, and it was, the advertisements for bid were February to March two thousand twenty-two. Project was bid March third, two thousand twenty-two. Construction went from June two thousand twenty-two to October two thousand twenty-two. The final punch list was completed March two thousand twenty-three, and then today's our final acceptance hearing. Construction went pretty well. We hit a couple of pockets of bad sand, but everything else went very straightforward. They really flew through the project. Here's a couple of pictures of the construction, some of the tile connections they made.
This attached here is, is exhibit of the cover sheet of the final pay application. It's a little hard to read here. The next slide summarizes the, the project construction costs a little bit more succinctly. So the FER estimate based on engineer's estimated quantities at the time of approval was one point two-three million. The awarded bid, again, in March of last year, was one point one million, just a little bit over. This is a unit price contract, which means that the contractor is paid based on measurement of a select group of bid items, and they're paid for actual completed work. The actual total construction cost came in under the awarded bid and a couple hundred thousand dollars, almost under the FER estimate at one million ninety-five thousand one oh eight forty-nine. Out of that, the base bid items was a little over one point, a million eighty thousand. Primary variances from the engineer's estimate, we had some private tile connections through one field that significantly exceeded our estimate. It's just one of those things that comes up. If you don't have accurate tile maps in advance, can create some extra work in costs. However, we did save costs primarily related to the proposed weapon, which was eliminated from the scope of the project. There were change orders on this project, really not, not anything as far as additional scope, there really just bid items that weren't established. There's no pricing established during the bid process for these specific sizes. We had cross connections, but we didn't have an eighteen-inch size. We had borings, but we needed to extend it. Simple things, pretty routine. The additional costs were fourteen thousand two ninety-three. To date, the contractor has been paid a million thirty-seven six sixty-six ninety-one, leaving only retainage to be paid. The final amount owed to Groundworks is fifty-seven thousand four forty-one fifty-eight. Groundworks has provided all of their required submittals for closeout, including their IC one thirty-four's, which is their withholding affidavits. These basically state that they have paid their subcontractors and all their suppliers. We've also received their warranty bond and their consent of surety from their performance bond company. So everything that they've provided is, is as required.
Throughout construction, our construction inspectors measured the total temporary damages throughout the watershed, so all of the farmland that was dug up or driven over due to construction. We tabulated all of these damages and gave them to the viewers to pay out, or to put into their spreadsheet so they can be paid out. Let's see, we've got about sixty-four total acres of damages total. We also provided an as-built to show how the project was actually constructed based on how, or compared to how it was designed. So these plans include the as-constructed elevations, sizes, slopes, tile connections, tile joints, all of that stuff. So finally, it is the engineer's opinion that the contractor, Groundworks Backhoe Service, has satisfactorily completed the contract in accordance with plans and specifications. Groundworks has provided the required submittals for final payment, signed final pay request, warranty bond, consent of surety, IC one thirty-four. ISG recommends final payment to the contractor and payment of the construction damages. Are there any questions for us?
Any questions? I don't have any questions. All right. Well, thank you, Jen and Chris, for that acceptance report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this hearing is being recorded, so please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit, and the county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive, are not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment on County ditch fifty-two improvement?
Yeah, Dwayne Smothers, Mapleton, Minnesota. The outlet went in through my property, and when they took the trees out, that's my, one of my main gripes, that I got letters on it. They took trees out, didn't ask, didn't do nothing, and they started to make a holding pond out there. Nobody else wanted it upstream, but they decided to put it on Ron Strite's property and my property. And after we said, no, we don't want that, and after the trees are all gone, they pushed them in a pile, and then they asked if they could bury them on my property instead of hauling them out. So I did consent to let them bury the, the trees and stuff they took out of our property. And that is all CRP. It's, I signed up last year for thirty years, and the NRCS is going to come on me because I've got giant ragweeds, twelve feet tall, and Ryan was going to get somebody out to chop that, and as of Thursday, it wasn't done. I'd like to have that reseeded because last fall, it was so dry that, like I say, beforehand, I had nice trees out there, but now I've got twelve-foot ragweeds, and I know the NRCS is going to jump on me for being out of compliance with my CRP. So, it's mandatory. I have CRP next to the creek, and I went through all the hoops, and I guess that is my only concern or gripe, that I wasn't informed to take the trees out. And I did consult a lawyer, but I said, it's not, it wasn't worth it. I want to get along with the county, but I did consent to bury the trees on my property, and I guess I would like to have the, somebody come in and chop that and reseed it. And there also is, on the strike property, I talked to Ryan, he's seen it, and there's a hole, somebody dug four feet deep and about twenty feet, six feet from my line. And somebody's going to tip a tractor over because the giant ragweeds, they're twelve feet tall. I didn't do it. Ryan says he didn't do it. So somebody's responsible for digging in that four-foot hole, twenty feet long, and it's an accident waiting to happen. And Ryan said, for me to come over and close it with my bucket, I can get in enough trouble without going on somebody else's property and filling that hole up. So somebody's responsible for digging that hole. It wasn't me, it wasn't my renter, so I guess that's my gripe, and my five minutes are up, but...
Thank you very much. Anybody questions? Thank you very much, and everything is do noted, okay? All right. Is there anyone else wishing to make comments on County ditch fifty-two?
Hello, I'm attorney Talison Burles from Berkholz and Associates. I represent Ron Strite. You guys have a recommendation to continue his claim till next month. You guys haven't ruled on it yet, so my first question is, I would almost ask that you guys rule on it, so that way I'm not potentially discussing topics that you won't even consider today. My position is that I think this, his claim, my client's claim, should just be heard today. There's no point in pushing it off another month. It's already been over a year since the damage was done to his property. I believe this board knows exactly what I'm referencing, and I can go into the details if you don't. But at this time, I would ask that you consider his claim, assess damages, and that way we can move this process forward. I believe that my client and I will not be accepting the damages assessed by the county, and this will end up back in court, but my first request is that you guys just make a ruling on whether or not you will even consider his claim today, so that way I know if I need to keep talking or not.
Make sure you're timed.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to make comments on County ditch fifty-two? Last time, is anyone else wishing to make comments on County ditch fifty-two? Hearing no further comments. I'll close the public hearing portion of the hearing. Are there any further questions or comments from the board members at this time?
Maybe just some clarification on the first speaker with the ditch and stuff? That just something you're ongoing, working on, Ryan?
Yes.
And the needs?
Yep, so Dwayne was right. We did have a quick conversation about a couple of weeks ago already. I do have a contractor. It's, it's hard to get those guys there as they're covering large areas, so that ragweed area will be addressed all the way through Dwayne's and, sorry, I'm blanking out on the property of the north.
Yeah, just what you're working on.
Yep, so that one's going to be addressed. I talked to the contractor, did the work, the hole issue, they actually backed a piece of equipment in it while they were out there working, so they knew about it, they didn't have anything to do with it. I have no idea where the hole came from. It's something that the board wishes that we address that. It'll, it'll be additional payment for the contractor. It was not him that did it. It was a hundred and twenty-four feet east of where we were actually doing work. But yeah, we'll handle the mowing, and if there's issues with the seeding, we can, we can deal with that also.
Sure.
Yes, Ken? So, help me, we, we do not have the damages recommendation from Ron Rehnquist yet as a viewer, do we?
I received an email yesterday from Ron late. Unfortunately, the attachment was not in that email, and I have not received physically a report or numbers from Ron.
You can't really act on, on that portion of it till we've got the damage report from the viewers.
I physically have no numbers from Ron, and again, I'm following somewhat of guidance from our Drainage Authority on this recommendation also. Yep, so I don't have any physical numbers.
Our Drainage Authority attorney.
Correct. Yes. Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay.
So at this point, from my understanding, is we're going to approve the final pay and then deal with this issue after we have had a number to see...
Correct.
...our response from Rehnquist, which I appreciate you not bringing it in today because I think that's important, that that's part of the agenda and the packet, so...
Yeah, and I physically, like I said, I got an email, but there's nothing in it, so...
So I think our, we need to wait until we have that data to make our decision.
And also, you know, make sure that we get that hole taken care of.
Yep.
For some reason, somebody made that hole.
Yeah, it's, it looks like a private tile when I jumped in there, but we sure can, yes.
You know, I can't, I can't, you know, we were there, we were digging on it, we, I think some, and it's not going to take much, we just have to make sure we get ahold of the owner and fill it in.
Correct.
You know, obviously, if the contractor already got stuck in that place...
Yeah, put his wall in order.
You know, there's, there's, there's an issue there, and we have to take care of it.
For sure. We can handle that.
All right. But that can be done under the warranty, period.
Well, to me, it sounds like it's not part of the project.
It is not.
Nobody's really sure where it comes out, so it'll be an extra cost to the ditch system over there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is it in the right-of-way of the ditch system? It's not even in the right-of-way, so we've got to deal with that. It's not even really on our...
It's a hundred and twenty-four feet to the east of where we're operating.
Wait, you just contact the owner and try to work the problem out? Wait, just contact the owner and try to work the problem out?
Yeah, and of course, they're out of state absentee, that's the ones that have to see your P D.
I bet they have a phone.
Yeah.
We can't go on the land to get their permission, sure.
All right.
You deal with that at staff level.
Okay. Yep, I can handle it.
All right. Can I get a motion and a second to accept, to accept the drafted findings and order approved by the engineer's contract acceptance report and order any final payment to be issued to the contractor? So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same?
I would move that we continue this hearing for the limited purpose of reviewing the damages recommendation from the viewers, Ron Rinquist, on this claim for damages on the Strate property.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we need a date in there, or do we?
September twelfth, yep.
September twelfth, I will include that. For the limited purpose of addressing the damages, report and claims.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same? That passes. All right. I think we're adjourned.
Yep, we got one more item for drainage.
Oh, we got another drainage item. We're adjourned for fifty-two.
Two more for me, yep.
All right. County Ditch fifty-two, six, fifty-six.
Oh, yeah, fifty-six. We got another one, all right. So County Ditch fifty-six, we are organizing with some groups about a possible sediment trap. Staff of the Blue Earth County Soil and Water Conservation District are preparing to apply for a grant to fund a sediment trap to be located along the C D fifty-six main open ditch south of the city of Lake Crystal. We have received a memorandum from Mark Orger of I S G, one of their I S, engineers, to inform the Blue Earth County Board about the efforts to apply for a large water quality grant. As the memo indicates, the county is under no financial obligation to grant the application. However, the proposal includes potentially transferring long-term maintenance of the infrastructure to the C D fifty-six drainage system, as well as a potential request for local cost-sharing dollars. Drainage management staff have limited involvement in the proposal and are not adequately situated to make a recommendation at this time. Staff is seeking additional guidance from the drainage authority on how the county would like to proceed and what involvement level the drainage authority may intend. So Mark did include kind of a quick overview of what's going on there. It involves a private landowner, and Commissioner Pap is probably more familiar with some of this, as we've just touched on the surface of it, but it's potentially addressing that sediment delta issues that we seem to have ongoing with the lake over there and City of Lake Crystal. So I think it's a good project. It's a very large grant, but they have some skilled grant writers at the S W C D. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot of additional information at this point. And until they do get the grant, then we'll also have to address the drainage statutory things of potential removal benefits and some of those other kind of items.
Mr. Chair, this is a project we've been working on a long time, and hopefully now with some grant availability, we'd really like to do something with the, with the sediment as far as trapping it before it goes in the lake, so we don't have that issue. And then, as we all know, once it's in the lake, then it becomes public waters and permits and things like that. I would urge that we continue to be engaged in this. We've got a willing landowner, which is a good thing, and partly because as we do water storage, there's some possibilities now where that water storage, that landlord, landlord, landowner and others can reuse some of that water for irrigation if possible through the new Bowser grants. They probably will have some local money, but I think it's important that we, as a drainage authority, are the, are the people in charge of the long-term maintenance to make sure and not have it be a five oh one C three or a group or this or that where their existence, you know, is maybe not as much of a guarantee, and just doing it through the, the infrastructure of the C D fifty-six maintenance, I think, would be a way to go. But like Ryan said, we're not to that point yet, but I don't want to discourage us from not seeking those grants and this opportunity to, to do something within the ditch system and not have, and kind of remove it from the lake and some of that. So I'm going to support this and ask that we continue to, continue to work at this and that we take a look at the drainage authority being responsible for the maintenance and infrastructure when we get to that time, if the grant is awarded.
I was just going to add too, most of us are familiar with the C D fifty-seven setup down by Mapleton. So it will look and act and function similar to that. The only additional, like Commissioner Pap mentioned, would be the, the opportunity for that landowner to use that, recycle that water for a pivot, if we get that far. And that equipment and that stuff would be something on his own, outside of what we're looking at, but very similar to fifty-seven down in Mapleton, which is where great, very good.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea if we have these grant opportunities, and if Mark's bringing this forward.
Yep.
He's one of the best in the area.
But we don't, we don't need to make a motion on this. This is more informational stuff and getting our support.
Correct, Mr. Chair. Yep, at this point, yes, Mr. Chair.
I am certainly supportive of this project.
Yeah, me too. I think it's a great thing, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no action today, sir.
No action. All right, and the county mowing and spraying cost estimates?
Yep, one more for me. Annually, the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff administers a countywide maintenance program for weed and brush control on all of our open ditch systems. The program involves a subcontractor who sprays not just weeds and brush along our systems. This type of maintenance is necessary as part of the drainage system management. The current maintenance plan is divided into three zones, with each zone being completely sprayed or mowed every third year. This morning, I am asking the Blue Earth County Drainage Management's, excuse me, Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff is asking for support for the county's open ditch system maintenance program for weed and brush control and authorize for expenses for the two thousand and twenty-three program, including the approval of the provided cost estimates, which the spraying estimate total was fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and mowing this year will be twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Again, just estimates, I don't think he's going to get through that whole spray list this year, that's, it's a lot, but that's all I have.
All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval of the two contracts.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So does this come out of the ditch fund?
Yep, each, each, maybe you guys probably have it pulled up. So each system is laid out with the cost, so we run it just like a, like a check in account. Yep.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Have a good morning.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, Ryan. And we'll jump to our chief deputy, Jeremy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner.
Good morning, Jeremy.
How are you doing today?
Good. So far, I think.
It's early.
Right.
You go right ahead.
All right, so the first item is the contract for police services with the city of Eagle Lake. The city of Eagle Lake approached us back in late June, July. They came into some employment hardships with a couple of their police officers leaving. So they went from a department of three down to a department of one. They're currently attempting to hire people and get through that process. However, they're down to one officer, so they asked for assistance from our office in filling some hours to make sure that their city and their taxpayers have effective law enforcement and patrol services for those citizens. So I think you guys all have a copy of the contract, and there's a lot of stuff in there, but ultimately, it's, they're asking for somewhere in the range of twelve to twenty hours per week, with some specific hours, like six hours a week between the hours of like seven P M. and one A M. Kind of how it's set up is we'll work with their one officer, their police chief, on his hours, and we're not contracting any hours when he's on duty. It's when he's on some time off that we're, we're filling some hours of patrol hours and taking calls and those type of items when he's not there.
I will move approval.
Second. And motion and a second. Any discussion?
One, I just appreciate the Sheriff's Department going over there and talking to them. From my understanding, they were a little concerned about their situation they had, and I, from what I've been told, you guys calmed them down a little bit by just letting them know that you are here to protect them, no matter what, contract or not. You're all close, your proximity couldn't be better to the city of Mankato and the response time, so I think that settled them down a little bit, so I appreciate it.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, every, every small town's got its independence, and they want to continue with their police department. I, I understand that, I work in small towns. So I appreciate the support that the Sheriff's Department is giving. Kevin?
We also have contracts with other, yes, small cities, correct? Are the contracts similar or things like that, or are they all kind of unique to the situation?
I mean, they're, they're all, I guess the other, the other contracts that we have, we have, we have a couple different contracts, like this is obviously contracted hours. And with, let's see, or Saint Clair, Pemberton, Vernon Center, Good Thunder, those are, are similar to this, where they're contracted police, police hours or patrol hours. And with those, they're kind of lenient as far as we just try to get hours during certain times that they're requesting. They understand if we're busy somewhere else, that if we don't get to them, I mean, there's, there's some months we are way over hours, and then there's some months if we're busy or, or short staff for vacations or sick time or whatever, that sometimes we don't fulfill those hours. But in the grand scheme of thing, things with the, with, when you look at the year-end result, they're, you know, we're fulfilling the amount of hours, and they understand that, you know, that we can't have set, just in our job, running from end to end or, or, you know, calls, call load-wise, it's hard to get. This one is unique because they have a police department. The rest of them don't have police departments. Now, with a lot of the other cities, even like with Madison Lake, we have an emergency on-call contract as well, which is different, and that's more if, you know, like with Madison Lake, they have a police department, they have two officers, they're short one currently, but there's times where they're off or have court or meetings or whatever, and if they can't fulfill those hours or don't have anybody that they can call, then we fulfill those emergency on-call hours, where then they put us on call, we don't do any patrol time, but if we go and take care of a call for them, then we bill them for those hours, if that makes sense. So this one's a little unique because we're just supplementing their police department for, for the timing until they can get somebody hired.
Which that'll be a challenge for them, but they're, they're going to give it a try.
Yep, and like we told them in their meeting, I mean, they're not alone. We're seeing it, you know, throughout the state, and, you know, Jeff goes to the fifth district sheriff's meetings and meets with those sheriffs, and I go with the chief deputies, and, and I don't think there's a county in southwestern Minnesota that isn't facing the same issues with smaller departments coming to them, even some of the sheriff's offices.
I think that's statewide.
It is, it's, well, it's nationwide.
Probably countrywide right now, because the small towns are, just the, the cost of doing business is going up so, so rapidly, it's unbelievable.
Not enough, not enough of them going to school for it, and, you know, it's just the supply and demand isn't there right now, so.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? That passes.
All right, the second item I have is the sheriff's office and emergency management has been awarded a two thousand and twenty-two E M P A R A grant, basically just an emergency management grant for, in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred. With this grant, it's a match grant. We've already met the match with salaries and things, so it's just basically submitting the grant once we had our match for, for the special project. And as you can, a big portion of this is going to go into this siren upgrade and replacement project that's been kind of ongoing and drug out with some vendors that we've had, just some communication difficulties with them on getting, getting solid numbers on it. And once we have gotten the solid numbers, we're working with the area cities with some of their sirens that were just basically out of date and, and not working properly. So with this grant, we're going to take the majority of that money and push it towards that, along with some emergency management portable radios that, with the radio upgrade project a few years ago, we kind of did the bare bones with that, and now to supplement what we, what we could effectively need if there is a disaster, some type, we'd need more portable radios, we'll have a cache of extra radios through the emergency management.
All right. Looking for a motion?
Second.
And motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
Everybody wants to take the money. Good job.
Yep, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same? That passes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Be safe out there.
All right. And jump right into public works, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan.
No action items today, oddly enough. Lot of information, so, yeah, we talked about this with staff, it says it's very rare to come without action items for the county board, but I think that just is a good sign that the machine is, the Public Works Department machine is working like it should, and things are humming right along, but we don't have any items for your approval today. The first informational item is going to be updates on our construction projects and projects in development. County stated Highway sixteen from the La Sura River to ninety. Majority of the curb and gutter and concrete driveway aprons are, have been constructed. The south hill section has been paved where there is curb and gutter, so it's good to see that road getting covered. And the remainder of the grading section north of the curb and gutter section, which effectively is the hill leading down to the La Sura River, is to grade, and it's been covered with gravel. So contractor appears to be on schedule to reach their anticipated completion date, which would be late August or early September.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, it'd be very nice not to be pushing that into the late fall. Cassa twenty-six from fifty-seven to Minnesota Highway twenty-two, Minnesota paving materials continues to work with one crew jumping between laying that storm sewer pipe that's relatively deep, the entire length of the project, and then jumping back and prepping the road section. So they're moving from the very west end of the project at the storm sewer outfall up the road, and they're up to Fairway Drive, which is, there's the residential subdivision west of Wickersham on the south side of the road. It's the very western outlook for that subdivision. So they're making, making progress, it's moving along. Cassa fifteen, we have that bridge replacement of that load-posted steel large plate, large culvert that actually constitutes a bridge. And you may recall about, in February, we ordered a new box culvert. We have that under contract, it was awarded last month. They are ready to close the road and begin work on Monday, August fourteenth. We'll be having a pre-construction meeting, actually tomorrow, and that'll take about two weeks to complete that bridge replacement.
How long did they get that culvert?
Uh, well, like I said, we ordered it, I believe, in February or March, and, you know, it's been available maybe for a week or two now.
Yeah.
So we have heard that the industry is starting to catch up, they're building more facilities, and there's, actually, I think, next week, we might be touring one in South Dakota that is trying to get certified for Minnesota, so they, they got up Sioux Falls, they could potentially provide us with pipe as well. It sounds like the lead time's down to three months. That's still not great, but coming from a year, it's better. It, it used to be like a month, and we need to get back to that. Ten and seventy-two in the city of Vernon Center, the city anticipates awarding deconstruction contract tonight to Holtmeyer pending the receipt of official concurrence from U S D A, R and D, or P F A. When I received the email from the city engineer late last week, that was still up in the air, so we'll be watching the council. was still up in the air. So we'll be watching the council minutes here and see if they receive that approval. He was anticipating seeing it, so we're hopeful that they can get that contract awarded. I think as soon as they get it, they'll hold a council meeting to get that awarded so that they can still get some work done this fall. In the meantime, they're seeking consultant contracts for wage compliance reviews and also geotechnical engineering assistance for materials testing for their construction contract. Holtmeier Construction again is the low bidder that they anticipate awarding to. They've already started submitting shop drawings for concrete pipe and manholes and, uh, materials for the project. So they're gearing up and eager to begin working. We still anticipate that the work on CASA 10 and 72 in town is going to take place in 2024. Uh, we've got CASA 13 from US 169 to CASA 1, ready to go. Uh, that's been quite a challenging project from a right-of-way acquisition and funding and permitting standpoint. Uh, we are still working through coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers permit. Uh, we have existing permit coverage. However, it expires on February 19th of 2024. So we're, we've been in contact with the Corps. We're waiting for concurrence from them. What we proposed is that we would like to, uh, start the contract advert, we're advertising for the contract right now, actually, with the intention of opening bids on August 30th for the county board to award on September 12th. We would specify in the contract that the contractor has to complete tree, the all of the Corps permit, authorized activities, including tree clearing, um, fill, fill in the wetlands, and then the realignment of the county ditch channel that is now under their jurisdiction, or the replacement of the, um, the culvert crossing where the county ditch crosses. That's actually going to be realigned because the county ditch is in clear zone of the road, which was a safety issue. So we're proposing that we would get all of that work done prior to that February, um, end date of the permit and then request an extension of that existing permit that we already have and carry that through the remaining permitted work, which would effectively be just the work for the bridge abutments and piers in the river, for the large bridge over the, over the river. So they seem to be receptive to that. However, they are going to be looking to see if they can extend the existing permit, um, or if they would want to reissue the entire permit. If they reissue the entire permit, they, we would have to stop the advertisement and delay bid opening and then wait and then try to force everything into 2024. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, knock on wood. Um, it's really frustrating to get a permit like that and then have such a short window on it to complete the work, especially in a winter where we're struggling with these significant funding shortfalls and, um, finally get everything ready to go with respect to right-of-way and then the permit ends up being a challenge again. So we'll keep you in the loop on that. Uh, staff didn't feel comfortable with the idea of not ta, not talking with the Corps ahead of time and letting the contract and then trying to go the ask for forgiveness versus, uh, permission route with such a significant permit. So we wanted to ensure that we've got all of our ducks in a row. We, uh, CASA 11 from the west county line to CASA 6, staff have the plans to 90%. Jack is preparing right-of-way folders to start meeting with landowners out there. So that should be moving forward and ready for construction next year. CASA 82, south Hoffman Road to Fair Street, design is progressing. We're anticipating seeing the 60% plans back from Stone Brook Engineering. That'll be a four-lane divided concrete highway with all of Victory Drive and then replacing the trails on the east and west side of the road, as well as new signals at Hoffman and Main Street intersections. Again, may be subdivided into two separate construction projects because of, um, funding shortfalls between both the city and the county, as well as just construction staging. We would only really permit one of those intersections being closed at a time, even if we did the entire project under one contract. So we have flexibility. If, uh, funding breaks loose, we can put it all under one big contract or we can subdivide it into two, we've got two separate plans that are being designed.
So north of Fair on, to Madison?
North of Fair to south of Maine and then south of Maine to Fair Street.
Right. But north of Fair Street to Madison's okay?
Yep. That was all reconstructed in the most recent iteration, which was 2000, we wrapped that up in 09.
Okay.
That was the Victory Drive Extension Stage 3 project.
Thank you.
Yep. We've got a slew of bridges under design and in development. On CASA 10 from the west county line to CASA 20, we plan on reconstructing the segment of road. That includes replacement of a bridge that frequently overtops during flood events. So our staff worked on developing alternative alignments for the road reconstruction and then we met with the higher impact landowners, uh, adjacent to the bridge and where the curves would be realigned to obtain their preferred routes. They were very good to work with. We got great feedback. And we sent that preferred route alignment to Erickson Engineering for the final bridge design and we will begin that road design, um, following, wrapping up items on CASA 11. So in the next month or so, we should be picking up on the full design of CASA 10. Yes, sir?
So that, that's the one that's posted? Which bridge are we?
Uh, that's the, what's, what do they, they call that one? CASA 10, um, where it comes on the, it's west of 20.
From the county line?
Yeah, from the west county line to 20, um, where it transitions and it, there's a farm place on the left. It, it, the bridge kind of turns and goes to the north and it overtops frequently. I don't know if, I'm ahead of that one's load-posted.
It is load-posted.
It is load-posted. Okay. I don't have that in front of me yet. So. We are still waiting on, um, we have to finalize those bridge plans to obtain bridge funding, obviously. So we'll be hopeful that we can obtain state bridge bond dollars to pay for half the bridge costs in order to CASA 13. We're designing CASA 4 Bridge. Uh, Erickson's wrapping up final design on that as well. Uh, and then County Road 146, we anticipate 100% plans for state aid supplemental in the coming weeks from Erickson Engineering. And the construction schedule obviously be dependent on state bridge bond funding again. So there's some money out there. We're hopeful to get more of it. We, we obviously just got one and a half million dollars for CASA 13 for the half of the cost of that bridge. And knowing that it's, it's very helpful, I think Commissioner Steenberg can agree with me on this, it's very helpful for us to have a healthy list of bridge projects. It, it really expresses in, in the need that we have for bridge bonding and, and federal bridge replacement dollars. And while it, at times can be frustrating to see us having a list of bridges sitting on the shelf, ready to be built without money, that's the only way that you're going to get the money is if you've got the plans on the shelf, ready to be built, you're in line then. Otherwise, you're on what they kind of call the in-development list. So the legislature takes that into account, but when they really want to know is how many projects are shovel-ready. Uh, so with that in mind, we are going to, uh, send a proposal out for design of two more bridges, one on CASA 25 down in the southwest corner of the county and then on County Road 139. So wanting to keep, uh, keep that pipeline moving with bridge replacement projects. Um, and then as we go into the conversation of bridge replacement projects, uh, I don't think I really need to overly emphasize the bridge need to the board. I know you guys understand this, but just to bring you up to speed, last winter, we hired Erickson Engineering to perform special bridge engine, special bridge inspections and load ratings on a handful of bridges in Blueworth County that had concerning timber elements. So where the bridges had significant structural components that were comprised of timber, we've seen significant decay in some of those elements. And actually, in other counties, they've actually seen partial or full failures of some of those bridges. So we developed a list of 10 bridges that we have been inspecting, that we were concerned about, that timber bridge inspection is something that's a little bit of a niche specialty beyond what myself and Mike and Nick are trained to inspect. And, uh, then load rating them is obviously outside of our wheelhouse. So we did hire Erickson Engineering, uh, to do the special inspections and then they subsequently load rated 10 of those bridges, including one Mankato Township Bridge and one bridge in the city of Lake Crystal. We submitted those load ratings. They all came back. Um, seven of them came back because they were road bridges. The other three were trail bridges requiring load restrictions and then two of the trail bridges require load restriction. So we did send those load rating reports to MINDOT. Once they approve those load rating reports, we will be posting those bridges and we will also be informing, um, Mankato Township and the city of Lake Crystal of the load posting requirements and offering them assistance with those. I know the, like Crystal, I, I heard you talking earlier about the, about this county ditch one, county ditch 56 that runs through town, correct? So this is the last one of the bridges where County Ditch 56 crosses city streets that needs to be replaced on Plotton 1 Street. And we've been wanting to, to replace that one for over a decade, but it has not been eligible yet. So this should push it over the threshold for eligibility for state funding. Uh, if you're interested, the bridges, I can run through them really quick. Uh, we, we evaluated the Red Jacket High Trestle. That's fine for the loads that we're running over it. We evaluated County Road 102 over Morgan Creek. That'll be load-posted to 28 tons. County Road 101 over Morgan Creek, uh, will be combination posted, but for larger trucks, it'll be able to carry the 40-ton legal weight limit. Mankato Township Road 194, Kirkwood Road, um, again, will be load-posted for specialty vehicles, but to be able to carry those 40-ton semi configurations. CASA 14 over a stream that'd be the southernmost crossing for CASA 14, uh, will be load-posted in some circumstances to 38 tons and in others 40. And again, it depends on the truck configuration. County Road 156 over the Maple River, uh, only posted at 18 tons. 10, 10 to 18 tons, depending on the configuration. County Road 139 over Perch Creek, 36 tons. Uh, Watton Street, Lake Crystal, 30, sorry, 30, 20 to 34 tons. And then we had two bridges on the Red Jacket Trail, uh, north and south of 34, if I remember correctly, the, the crossing at 34. There's two old railroad timber bridges. Uh, they're both in very poor shape. Their rating is to not allow anything heavy to that pickup truck to go over those. We had previously been crossing those with tractor backhoe and other pieces of equipment occasionally for routine maintenance activities on the trail. So we're going to look at, uh, different mechanisms to try to see how else we could fund, uh, trail bridge replacement, you know, now that we have that, um, Parks of Regional Significance designation for the Red Jacket Trail. I think that'd be a good mechanism. And we'd like, I think, to get rid of those bridges and just put in a large 48-inch concrete or steel pipe and call it good and not have the bridges on our system anymore. We do have some maintenance activities. Uh, again, the, the machine is running well. Crews are continuing seal coating operations. They've got about another week left on that and then we'll be, uh, moving back to fog sealing. So after they, they lay the, the emulsion and the rock and let it sit for a while, on the higher volume roads, we go back and we actually fog seal so the emulsion, but back over the top of it really helps bind the aggregate down, gives a nice reflective surface for the new striping. And a lot of time, people think they get a new road out of it, but it's, it's just, uh,
Looks nice.
Good maintenance. Yes, they look very nice. I wish we could do it on all our roads, but we stick to the higher traffic volume roads for that.
Is that what the state did with AD3?
Yes. Yep.
That looks nice.
Yes, it does. Yep. We're wrapping up maintenance gravel hauling. We've added, uh, gravel to about 100 miles of county roads. So that's our, one of our annual routine maintenance contracts. Crews are mowing out the middle third of the county. We're wrapping up replacement of a large 60-inch concrete culvert on County Road 155, southwest of, southeast of Mapleton. That should be reopening later this week. And the second round of calcium chloride dust control application will be starting this week as well. The Bray Park Beach restroom area was completed with concrete sidewalk around the building and it sounds like they're anticipating that the contractor will move in this week to begin work on the playground equipment replacement at Bray Park. Once the playground is completed, we'll be able to, uh, move forward with the rest of the kind of sidewalk that surrounds and connects everything together. We wanted to get that work completed so that we didn't have to break any sidewalk or ensure that we're at the right elevation. Rework's never any fun, so, uh, they'll be moving forward on that to get that completed yet this year. And then, uh, the last item I had on my agenda was inclusion, it was a very brief memorandum, just to inform the board that the FERC completed their annual inspection of the Rapid Ann Dam on July 10th. A formal report will be provided by FERC. I said that when I wrote the letter. I got the formal letter, um, yesterday afternoon, so I did not include it in the board. I will provide a summary in the following, uh, summary memorandum for the board. Really effectively, they've acknowledged all of the documents that the county has sent and stated that they are acceptable as far as our emergency action plan on our dam safety. Those are documents we've been preparing, uh, some in-house, some with the assistance of our engineering. Um, effectively, just kind of continue to monitor and watch. They did note some minor seepage of the powerhouse and as well as safety concerns with anybody going in, remember those upper, um, before you go out on the roof, if we go in those upper levels of the powerhouse where there's falling concrete from the ceiling, they noted that that's a significant safety concern and really state that people should be very limited as far as it was even into those rooms. So, uh, no real news on the licensure surrender. It's been radio silence. So I think we'll give them a little bit more time to process and if we don't hear something within the coming weeks, we'll start taking efforts to reach out to them.
Okay.
So that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Good job.
Good job, John.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right. And we have our county attorney comes up.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Uh, the report speaks for itself. Just a couple of things that I would point out. Um, for whatever reason, you know, in my career, it's always seemed that August has been kind of a lull in the storms, so to speak, but this summer has not been that way in any way, shape, or form. Uh, we got plenty of, plenty of things going on. Uh, actually, a couple of big tax court cases that are going, that are more involved than usual. Let's just put it that way. So, and then, uh, crime continues to be, do okay in the, in, in the area. So beyond that, I don't know if you have any questions, concerns, comments about anything. Uh, it was a successful Blueworth County Fair that, uh, we had a couple of weeks ago. So weather was good. I know some of you were able to make it and some weren't because you were out of town and actually in warmer weather. So with that, I'll...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And we'll jump from the county to, to the administration. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for July 18th.
I move a second.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
I got a motion and a second for the bills. Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 11 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational item, uh, for the board today, uh, starting with the promotion of a senior environmental specialist to a property and environmental resources supervisor overseeing our property and land area within the department. Then we also had a promotion of a social worker in our disability services area to a social service supervisor in that same area, fulfilled that new position in our human services department. We've subsequently initiated recruitment to refill that social worker position. Then we had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator, a part-time position. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of an assistant county attorney, um, and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then lastly, we had a resignation of a data support specialist in our human services department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. If there are any questions from the board, I'd be happy to answer those related to these human resources items. All right. Item number 12 in your packet then is a memo regarding, uh, city of Mankato Elections Services, an agreement that the county has reached with the city of Mankato. Uh, historically, we have, uh, provided election services to, uh, the city of Mankato. And so we are updating a three-year agreement that we've had in place with the city of Mankato. So this, uh, contract period would cover the years 24 through 2027. Um, the agreement is substantially the same, but there are a few, um, changes to note. Uh, those are indicated there where, um, again, the term, I guess it actually is a four-year agreement. Um, the county and city have some flexibility for early termination, um, that might come as a result of, um, any kind of changes in the structure or if the legislature were to change some things, that may require us to reconsider, uh, this agreement. Uh, we do require the city to be responsible for representing themselves for any election-related legal matters that might surface. And then the county is responsible for early voting and compliance with any data practices, uh, requests that come related to elections. So... So staff are recommending approval of this agreement for providing election services to the City of Mankato.
I move approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Since I was the first one to do a contract with the City of Mankato, I'm happy to see we are getting closer to actually getting paid for what we do. It's a tough job and they're lucky they have us.
There you go.
Well, Commissioner O'Connor, I do appreciate those comments because I think the job has gotten tougher in the last few years, certainly. The expense is increasing. We have adjusted the pay for our election judges as a part of this agreement. And so we know that those costs are going up. The county has added some dedicated staff for elections. So it is becoming more expensive to run these elections. We are being told that, well, we're getting reimbursed for the presidential primary. Talking with Mike Stauburger yesterday indicated we probably covered half of our costs with that reimbursement. So the idea that other levels of government are paying for the work at the local level is not entirely accurate.
That's putting it nicely, yeah. Well, and the problem is that we now have judges that are being assaulted and yelled at for doing their job. And that's, so there's a lot of stress there and a lot of judges don't want to be judges for a day, you know, because of that kind of stuff, which is ridiculous.
And we're doing everything we can to limit those situations and we really do appreciate those folks that fill that role because it is kind of critical to our democracy.
Right. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, passes.
Thank you. Item number 13 in your packet is the financial status report for July 31st. You'll see that our total revenues are at about 66.7 million compared to expenses of just under 57 million. We're at 58.3% of the year in terms of our budget targets. You'll see total revenues sit at about 56% of our budget, whereas expenses are a little lower at just under 48%. Things to note here is that our state and federal revenue is running a little bit behind last year. I'm hearing from our human services department that some of their grants aren't coming on kind of a typical timeframe. So it's been a little frustrating there. Interest on investments, you'll notice that it's quite a bit different picture this year than it was last year. So that certainly has been helpful to our budget to see those investments performing better at this point in the year. On the expense side, we've talked about in the past, the personal services are running a little stronger than our budget because of the changes we were needed to implement as a part of our class and comp study. Contracts and fees are catching up a little bit with our road projects moving further into their completion. So all in all, things seem to be on track for the most part, but be happy to answer any questions the board has on this part of the financial status report. Seeing no questions there. Move on to the enterprise fund, our landfill. Total revenues are at 2.5 million compared to expenses of just over 2 million. We do have some cell construction that's occurring. So our land improvements, we're seeing some expenses there. And then the contracts and fees are up a little bit from last year. I will say that the county's takeover of the operational landfill has been working well. Some of you may have heard at department head meetings, some reports of the additional recycling that we've been able to do by having staff there dedicated to pull things out of the waste stream has been really impressive. And so I think it's working very well at this point. In terms of the second page, the cash and investment balances, you'll see our total available funds towards the top at 66.7 million. Our six-month operating needs sit at 58.7. So we're a little bit of, had of our target there as we wait for our second half taxes to come in. And then our total county funds sit at 136 million. Again, be happy to answer any questions on any of the financial status reports, if the board has any.
Any questions?
Good.
No questions.
All right. And I guess that comes down to the end and we will have our commissioners' reports. Kevin, can you start with you this morning?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Since our last board meeting on July 18th, met with the planning and zoning folks later that day, on the 19th, I attended the GMG Green Seam Ag Event at Moon Dogs. It's already mentioned today, the 20th through the 23rd was at the Bluewood County Fair those four days. On the 24th of July, we had our Rural Minnesota Energy Board, had our quarterly meeting. And then the 28th, Pace Committee met over Zoom, over a couple of applications. August 1st, we had our work session and lunch. August 3rd, I attended the 75th Anniversary Celebration of World Transfer as part of the Room Fest event. And then this morning, before board meeting, the JD1 meeting. That completes my report.
All right. Patty?
After our last meeting, I attended NACO in the warm climate of Texas. And when I got back on the 28th, I went to the MSSA Ledge Breakfast in town. August 1st was a work session. August 2nd, the United Way Women with Heart Lunch was a heavily attended event. It was pretty impressive. And on August 3rd, I went to County Government 201 that AMC put on, which was really good. And I hope they continue with more training for those of us who are new in the role, except there weren't that many new there. It was a pretty good mix of old and new. So it was a good training. That's all I have.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, I had a couple SECB meetings, my statewide emergency communication board. Had my ledge meeting. Just getting spooled up for the upcoming session with the legislators. Got some new legislation we're going to try to pass through and some old stuff we've been working on for a couple of years to get moved forward. Work session was mentioned, covered a lot of data that day. It was good to hear from the property tax environment, or property tax people and Ryan and that report he gave and to better understand where our growth is going to be and how we can deal with that. Had planning and zoning meeting. We only had one item, which could come in forward to us next meeting. Very straightforward, just some modifications to one we already approved. So that went very well. And then Kevin already mentioned JD1 this morning and then several calls on the VRBO and a lot of discussion on the gravel pit over by the Rapidan Dam. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Mark?
And July 20th, I'd go to the county fair and did see our esteemed county attorney and actually Commissioner Kevin Pat when I was there. It's always good. July 21st, I did go to All Seans Arena, the meeting. And then July 25th, I still go out to the airport, Commissioner, and so I was there that day. And July, or I should say August 1st, had our boardroom session, boardwork session. Night to night was, that night too, and went to a couple of places. And then we had August 2nd, department heads, and then July, this morning with the JD1. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Well, my report's rather fast because the majority of it has to do with the NACO conference. I was honored to be given a few appointments at NACO, which was Vice Chair of Transportation, Vice Chair of the Rural Action Caucus, and Vice Chair of Membership. After the NACO conference was over with, on the 1st, we had our work session. We had our department head meeting on the 2nd. On the 3rd, I was at AMC County Government 201. And again, it is a good thing, good refresher for many and sometimes it's more than just a refresher for some people that were there, I'm sure. And that's the end of my report. Move to recess.
Well, actually adjourn this meeting, Mr. Chair.
We adjourn? Okay, move to adjourn. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, adjourn.
Good job, Mr. Chair.